I'm Lewisville Town Council. So nice to see those of you joining us in our chamber tonight. Always great to see your faces and your nodding heads. And we're not talking to an empty room, so thank you so much for being here. And those of us, and Susan's back there shaking her head already. She hadn't even heard the first item yet. But thank you, folks, who have joined us on TV 6, also on Facebook. We're broadcasting live, and Veronica gives me the thumbs ups. We're broadcasting live on both of those channels. Thank you for taking time out of your day to make your watching Lewisville Town Council and the town business that affects all of you part of your day. With that, we'll do our customary roll call of council members, starting with Mr. Huffman.
Take over. Read here.
Well, happy Thursday evening, everyone. My name's Melissa Hunt.
And I'm Mike Horn.
I'm Ken Sadler.
Jane Welch.
Long.
Very good. We also have with us tonight our town staff, our town manager, James Ayers, our town attorney, Mr. Bus. I always like fuss bus. Jean Marie always told me, said it's not, rhymes with bus, it's not fuss, it's fuss. No, I'm not on drugs tonight, I'm just rambling a little bit. Elliot Fuss. We have our assistant town manager and planning director Stacy Talbert, our public works director, John Hannah. Back in the back, our communication specialist Veronica Leisure, our town clerk, Dora Moore, and our town finance director Pam Orell. Thank you all for being here and the great work that you do. We'll start our evening, this evening, with the invocation that will be provided by Council Member Madi Long, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Ivan Huffman. Please stand if you're able to join us.
Heavenly Father, we thank you that we're able to gather this evening to help make decisions for our town. We pray that you help guide us and lead us in the direction that you see fit. Heavenly Father, be with those that are sick. Please heal them. Lord, we just thank you for all that you do for us. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I bow to the witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All righty. Council members, you have received the agenda in advance of this meeting. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes or revisions?
Yes, sir. The agenda has been amended to add another action item from last week's agenda.
Actions that we took at the briefing that we're reporting out tonight. Okay, very good. Council members, if there are no other changes, entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Don't move.
All righty, that's great. We're in tandem now, we're on it. Council member Huffman makes the motion, council member Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Mr. Manager, you have our consent agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. This is item number two on the agenda. The consent agenda consists of two items. First, Resolution 2024-001. These are the financial statements for five months ended November 30th, 2023. And the second one is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from December 14th, 2023.
Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. They're generally our financial reports or our minutes from last meetings. Any council member can choose to pull one of those off for individual consideration, but generally, we take them all at once. Council member, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. We have a couple of presentations tonight. We're going to start with a presentation, and I'm going to involve Council member Welch in this, if you'll join me down front, Council member Welch. Judy Burkhardt, you're here. Yes? No?
No.
She's not. Well...
Do you have any information about her?
All righty, well, we may hold off on that presentation then for a future meeting. Okay. PJ, you have an introduction of the new deputy.
Good afternoon. Let me give you this stats for December, and then I'll introduce our newest member of our community policing. So, our total stats for December, 685 calls for service, 355 security checks, 46 traffic arrests with 22 alarms, and still running about a five-minute response time. And you can see how those numbers are compared. They're down quite a bit, 813 this time last year. So, not a lot to report. Recovered pretty good from all the rain. Did have several roads that were flooded out and closed. And thought it'd be a good time to bring up, Dora, if you'll pull up that next PDF, North Carolina General Statute 136-26. Just want to remind everybody that it is a state statute. It's against the law to move, or tamper, or actually damage any kind of barricades that have been set out. So, our deputies went down, and we had numerous people that tried to get down to the water to actually take a picture. So, lots of times, you'll see these barricades set out at different points. Even though you can't see exactly what's happening, lots of times, we have to take in consideration, for example, when we shut down Conrad Road, we try to block it off at Thunderwood Farms, because if you set the barricades right at the water, you get a traffic congestion, and there's nowhere to turn around. You get a lot of delivery trucks, these Amazon trucks and FedEx, 18-wheelers coming through there. So, we've got to make sure that we get these barricades set out at a good location where we can make this traffic turn around and be smooth. So, just be patient with us. We're constantly monitoring it, trying to make sure that we can open that road up. Veronica done a great job trying to get that out on social media. Our communications puts it out there through DOT. So, even though you know where you're going, if you'll put these, if you'll put an address in your Waze app, that is linked up to DOT. So, lots of times, you'll get road closures, even if you're driving local. So, as we enter into more of this rainfall that's actually coming, and maybe a snow event or anything like that, just be patient and make sure that you leave the barricades where they're at. We had an incident where somebody removed them overnight, somebody come through, and Lewisville Fire Department actually had to get the boat crew out there to get a lady off the roof of her car. So, as a practical joke, I don't know what the incident was or the meaning behind it, but it is something that should be taken serious. So, spread that word to your friends, your families, and make sure that we can leave these barricades where they're at. With that being said, if nobody has any questions, I'm going to bring up Deputy Manning. So, Deputy Manning's been with us about a month now. He's got about eight years' experience law enforcement. We snatched him away from the patrol division, so it's kind of like scouting when we're doing baseball. We figure out somebody becomes a free agent, we kind of snatch him up. So, very fortunate to have his knowledge. He's spent some time with Winston-Salem Police Department, Concord Police Department, currently serving as a field training officer here in Lewisville. So, he's local, and we're glad to have him. He's, he'll be willing to learn and fit right in, so I think he'll be. It's been an enjoyable experience for me to have him as part of our team. So, with that being said, I'll bring up Deputy Manning.
Hey, Deputy Manning. Just want to thank you guys for allowing me to be a part of the town, even in maybe a small way. So, like Sergeant PJ said, have roughly eight years' experience, various specialized units along that way, vice narcotics, human trafficking, stuff like that. So, definitely excited to be here, love the area. It's definitely different from some areas, other areas I've worked at. So, it's a lot nicer, cleaner. The citizens definitely appreciate us a lot, and we definitely appreciate you guys for appreciating us. So, again, thanks for having me, and hopefully a long, fulfilling relationship we guys can have together. So, thank you again.
Council members?
I just want to say thank you for all y'all's work that you did this past week with the flood. And I know everybody in this room and everybody watching is really appreciative of all that. So, thank you for the work you've done, and you will continue to do.
Deputy Manning, you are a Lewisville resident?
Yes, sir.
Which is always great to have, but you also have a great voice for radio. So, maybe there's something like that in your future.
That'd be my retirement.
But welcome. Glad that you're part of our community policing efforts. If we can ever be of service to you, please let us know.
Thank you.
All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, there'll be two opportunities to speak this evening during our public forum, now and then at the end of the meeting. So, if any of you wish to share thoughts with the council, this is a good time to do it. We do have two people signed up for the first public forum. Christopher Smith, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. Christopher Smith, address is 889 Dalton Road. I'm here to address the council about a zoning proposal along 421 for a billboard. I think it's F-1634, which is going to go before the Winston-Salem Council to be voted on. And I wanted to just present my stance on that. I'm against the proposal for a billboard along 421. I think it sets a dangerous precedent in two different ways. The first is, we have no billboards up and down 421 from at least Peace Haven Road all the way to the river. I think if we allow one billboard to come in on 421, we're going to start seeing a lot more, and I don't think anybody really wants that. And also, there's another tract of land for sale just before that tract of land where the proposal is for the billboard. And if we allow that tract of land to have some kind of business zoning, then what's to stop the other tract of land before that from having different kinds of business zonings? And it abuts right to Dalton Road, and I just don't want to see that on my residential street.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Smith. You'll be interested in, the manager's going to report out here when we have the actions we took at our last briefing meeting. We did pass a resolution by the council in opposition to this particular billboard application. We presented that to the planning board, and we'll also present it to the county commissioners when they hold their public hearing on it. But thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts with us. Very good. Next person to speak is Nicholas Cole Pollak.
Hello, I'm Cole Pollak. I'm a Lewisville resident. I'm a senior at Early College of Forsyth. I'm an Eagle Scout, and I was recently honored by the council, and I received my Congressional Award Gold Medal. Today, I want to talk to you about carbon monoxide poisoning. A year and a half ago, my family experienced nausea, headache, dizziness, and fatigue. Luckily, with the help from the Lewisville Fire Department, we were saved from our carbon monoxide leak. Others aren't so lucky. Carbon monoxide is a colorless, odorless gas that byproduct from fossil fuels burning, which builds up from indoor furnaces, generators, cars running in attached garages, propane stoves, and wood fires. In the U.S., 100,000 people are seen in the ED each year with poisoning, and 420 people die from carbon monoxide poisoning. We need to prevent these deaths in Lewisville. In NC, prior to 2011, carbon monoxide detectors were not part of the building code, so all residents living in homes built prior to this time needed to check that they have a carbon monoxide detector that meets UL 2034 standards. What I request from the Lewisville Town Council is I want help to get the word out to Lewisville residents to check for, and if necessary, install carbon monoxide detectors in their homes. I also want to help alert our local schools to make sure that we have updated carbon monoxide detectors before it's a state law, because it's important for a safe learning environment. I also want help brainstorming other ways we can get this information out to the residents of Lewisville. An idea is maybe on Memorial Day, there is a scheduled patriotic concert, and maybe I could have a table at the event to help spread carbon monoxide detectors awareness in conjunction with the Lewisville Fire Department. I've written an article on this problem, and I'm trying to get it into the Clemens Courier. I've sent it in, and they have yet to respond, so if you maybe have any connections to help it get published, that would be awesome. I talked to Mr. Ayers, he gave me his contact information, and he was very helpful. But since my article has the petition link on it, it cannot be published in the Lewisville newsletter. Additionally, I have started, the petition is to help encourage our state legislature to vote for and fund a law that requires public K-12 schools to have up-to-date carbon monoxide detectors that are regularly checked. The NC General Assembly is currently doing an investigative study on the cost in how many K-12 public schools are lacking carbon monoxide detectors. Unfortunately, this is just a study, and it is significantly delayed. I am afraid that'll be pushed to the side due to cost concerns, and I think it's important that NC residents are aware of the situation so that we can protect our youth. I request that you sign and forward my petition, and maybe help it get into the Clemens Courier, just because I want people to see this really soon. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Can I, I have QR codes?
In fact, you can give it to our clerk, and she'll be able to give it to us.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Always appreciate individuals, particularly our younger individuals, taking an interest in our town, but not only that, in the greater importance of public safety and safety in our homes. I do recall, you know, when you came in, I didn't recognize you, but you were here with your sister, and I'm trying to think, there were two other people with you, and they were, oh my goodness, my memory's gone. But anyway, yes, we did recognize, you are national recognition for the Congressional Medal of...
Congressional Award Gold Medal? Or...
Gold Medal, Gold Medal, primarily around community involvement activities that you performed in the community. Very good. Well, it's good to see you again. Thank you for being here, and thank you for taking a leadership role in this. We'll do what we can to help. All righty, Mr. Manager, we're to new business. I think, Dora, you have the first item.
Yes, sir. In the council's packet was the certificate of sufficiency for the recent annexation request that the town has received. This is for the Shallowford Road Driving Range. There was no findings, everything looked okay. This would be an uncontiguous annexation if the council were to move forward with it, and it is within the range of properties that could be uncontiguously annexed. And there is no further action needed by the council on this particular item.
Very good. Council members, any questions? All righty, Stacy?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, before you, is Resolution 2024-003. This resolution is to set a public hearing for rezoning for a property off of Shallowford Road from Forsyth County AG, or excuse me, RS40, to Highway Business for a Shallowford Road Driving Range. Tonight simply is to set the public hearing. We have had a request from the applicant to postpone that public hearing until March. The resolution in front of you does recognize February 8th, 2024, but we would like to ask you tonight to adopt the resolution with the amendment of holding that public hearing for March 14th, 2024, at 6:00 PM.
Very good. Any questions for Stacy?
Any effect, excuse me, any effect regarding the annexation request?
We will be asking for the same public hearing to be postponed for annexation at the next, for the next resolution, Dr. Sadler.
Sorry.
Council members, any questions? All righty, we'll need a motion, please, the appropriate motion, setting a date for a public hearing, and March 14th, which is our next council meeting.
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-003.
Second. Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Huffman makes the second. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Stacy?
As Dr. Sadler mentioned, our next resolution is 2024-004, a petition to set the public hearing for an annexation request that goes along with the rezoning request that we just mentioned. Again, the resolution does ask for it to be set February 8th, 2024, but at the request of the applicant, we are asking to postpone that public hearing date to March 14th, 2024, for the annexation public hearing as well.
Any questions for Stacy?
Stacy, I do have a question. You had mentioned earlier that it's Forsyth, it's RS40, not agricultural?
I believe it is RS40.
Okay, so it's RS40 to HB?
Yeah, RS40 and Ag is very similar, but it's just the county jurisdiction zoning versus... Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, the petitioner doesn't have any requests before the Forsyth County Board of...
No, they currently do not.
Stacy, just take a second. I know we spend a lot of time at briefing on this particular subject. Explain how the two items, two public hearings we're going to set, are related.
Whenever someone asks for an annexation, particularly of a property that is not in our boundaries or not contiguous to our boundaries, what goes along with that is a rezoning. When an annexation happens, we have 60 days to set zoning from county zoning, where the jurisdiction it's coming from, to Lewisville zoning that would regulate the property under our Unified Development Ordinance and our zoning regulations. In this particular situation, they are requesting a rezoning of the particular property for a commercial use. They're requesting a Shallowford Driving Range to be placed on the property. And in that annexation, the reason we're doing the rezoning and the annexation on the same night, generally, when people annex property, if they aren't granted the rezoning, then they don't, they usually withdraw their annexation for transparency purposes. But, so that hand, and that's why it goes hand in hand, whenever we do have an annexation, which is a request that is before us, we have to set that zoning for Lewisville zoning. In this particular case, it is a conditional district for a business that they're asking for when we set that zoning, instead of just a general use zoning.
Very good. So, council members, we do have that updated resolution setting the public hearing date for March 14th. Will entertain a motion, please.
I'll motion again. Motion to approve Resolution 2024-004.
Any discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Second.
Second. Dr. Sadler makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the, Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes, I am an anesthetamine, that was my drug comment in the beginning. Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously, and somebody's going to have to drive me home tonight.
Thank you, council.
All righty. Mr. Manager, I think you have the next item.
Yes, sir. This is item number 6D on the agenda. This is Resolution 2024-006, Personnel Policy Revisions. Now, there are two amendments proposed for the personnel policy. First, under the section regarding leave without pay, the current policy lacks clarity on the ability of the employee who is on leave to pay for base benefits and optional benefits, health, dental, vision, disability, and others, which could make a big difference depending on the reason for the leave. The revisions allow an employee to retain benefits while on leave as long as he or she pays the town for those costs, and the benefit providers allow it. So, that's the first one. The second change, under the section regarding holidays, the proposal is for the town to follow the standard holiday schedule used by the state of North Carolina. This will align our organization with the state, the county, and most of the surrounding municipalities. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2024-006.
Any questions for the manager?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Manager Ayers. As regards to leave, do we have a limit on how long an individual can be on leave?
Yes, ma'am. In this particular case, it's up to 12 months leave. Our practice, of course, is to make sure we understand the situation, and we will continue to verify and validate that the reason for the leave continues to remain ongoing, but the current policy states up to 12 months at the manager's discretion.
All right, that's our limit of 12 months.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions?
I have a question. Regarding the state side of things, is that just going to, that will be continually every single year that you guys are recommended that you'll follow the state, not just in 2024?
Yes, indeed. This, the State Office of, the Office of State Human Resources, OSHR, they actually publish it at the end of each year for the forward calendar year. So, we do have on file the 2024 proposed calendar.
Okay. But what you're asking for is that we continue to follow that every year?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Will entertain the appropriate motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2024-006.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any additional discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Mr. Manager, you have some upcoming events for us.
Yes, sir. Item number 7A, these are the upcoming events and closings. First, the e-cycling event will be held this Saturday, January 13th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Shallowford Square. Electronic devices that can be recycled include televisions, computers, computer cables, computer mice, computer speakers, also things like printers, scanners, hard drives, as well as cell phones and cellphone chargers. This event is free for Lewisville residents. Second, the next CPR class will occur on January 19th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. I am pleased to report that the class is full, and any people who had to drop out have been replaced by people on the waitlist. So, clearly, we're getting a lot of interest, but I want to make sure, folks, we don't want anybody to worry. We have more classes coming up on the following dates, which include weekend hours to increase the appeal to more potential participants. First, Saturday, April 27th, from 8:00 to 12:00, and Saturday, August 10th, from 8:00 to 12:00, both of which would be out at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. And third, the Public Art Advisory Committee and the town of Lewisville will be hosting the opening reception for the juried art show entitled "Lewisville, the Town I Love." This art show will run from February 9th through March 9th, and the opening night reception will be held from 4:30 to 7:30 PM on February 9th at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center.
This is very exciting. What is our cutoff date for submission of items to be considered?
Yes, it's January 25th at 1:00 PM, and those are coming in to our town clerk, who will be gathering those, and they'll be going off to the jury.
Very good. If you are an artist and you live in Lewisville, we encourage you to participate in. This is really, really exciting. Our Public Art Committee has been working very hard, and this is the first show that we've been able to put together, so I can say that we're all, we will all be there, we hope you will be there. And if you're an aspiring artist or an established artist, please, 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 send your submission to our town clerk, Dora Moore, to be considered by the Public Art Committee for participation in this show.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just had a quick question regarding the e-cycling. Do they need to do anything to the equipment, the computers? Do they need to drill hard drives out, any of that kind of stuff? Or do they just bring the equipment and drop it off?
Equipment's just brought up in a drive-through format. It's really great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are there any disclaimers regarding what councilperson Hunt just asked on hard drives?
At this point...
Security of those things.
Right. I don't know that they're, I mean, it's up to folks individually whether they want to get rid of their equipment or hard drives or things like that. So, that's up to each individual.
I understand, but the question, I think she was driving it, and I don't know, but typically, you know, hard drives, it can be all kinds of stuff, including a lot of personal protected information and things like that. And, I mean, I'm just wondering if there ought to be some disclaimer, if there ought to, and maybe the council can tell us whether it makes any difference if we offer a disclaimer or not.
Yeah. At present, there have been no disclaimers in the communications. This is the same as been practiced in the prior years.
I understand. That's probably true, but I don't know that, the concern would be, even if it's been a past practice, was it the appropriate past practice?
That's a great point.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's no risk, if there's no liability, if people bring a hard drive that's got something on it, and there are two ways to look at it. One would be, there's no liability to the town, but an individual might be unwittingly exposed to something...
Yes, sir.
That could be guarded against just by an announcement. That's really all I'm getting at.
Yes, sir. We'll take a look at that. Thank you, sir.
All righty, anything else?
So, in the CPR, what's the total number of people who get trained? Do you know?
Who have undertaken...
The first class was 25. This class should be 25, and so far, they've been fully subscribed, so we're hoping for even more participation as we get some weekend hours in there, too.
Okay. And is it the fire department that actually, their teacher, the instructors are from the fire department?
Yes, sir. They, in fact, they have a great certified instructor there at Lewisville Fire Department, and they've been just great partners in this.
Any other questions? All righty. James, I believe you have an update on our solid waste and recycling contract negotiations.
Yes, sir. This is item number 7B on the agenda. The town of Lewisville issued a request for proposals, or RFP, for the solid waste and recycling contract. We received four proposals with one non-responsive, and the quotes were quite close. At present, the town is in the process of negotiating a contract with the highest-rated firm. In the event negotiations should fail, then we will proceed to the next highest-rated company. We expect to bring the proposed contract to town council for its consideration in February.
Any questions for James? All righty. Ms. Moore, you have the next items, please.
Yes, sir. Council, I just want to remind you of your council retreat, February 16th through the 17th, at Mary Alice Warren Community Center. The manager and staff are working on some of the topics, and I believe we've been receiving feedback from the council on that as well, so those are being incorporated. The next item is the Essentials of Municipal Government session that will be held at the UNC School of Government in Chapel Hill, February 22nd and 23rd. A majority of our council will be in attendance. Not all were able to join. And then the third thing, we just wanted to remind you, is that the boards and committee appointments will be made in March. The applications for these are steadily coming in.
What is our deadline on that?
January 31st.
Okay. Any questions? Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're out there and you would like to be considered for an appointment to one of our boards or committees, you have until the end of January...
31st.
January 31st to submit your application. You can do that online. Go to our website, louisvillenc.net. You'll find an application tab, I believe, for boards and committees, and you can fill it out there and submit it, and we encourage you to do that. Be part of your town, your town's future. Thank you. All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have the first Thursday of every month is when we hold our council briefing. You've noticed that we've moved through the issues rather quickly tonight, but that's because we are not taking them lightly. We spend a great deal of time the first Thursday of every month to get briefings and ask questions and make sure we do our due diligence before we arrive at this meeting tonight, which is obviously the second Thursday. We did take a number of actions, and at this time, our manager will report those out to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is item 7D on the agenda. First, Resolution 2024-002 is approved, and it directed the town clerk to investigate the annexation petition for the Shallowford Road Driving Range in accordance with North Carolina general statutes. Second, Resolution 2024-005 was approved by town council, and this action requested the city-county planning board and the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners to designate U.S. Highway 421 from the Winston-Salem Western City Limit all the way westward to the Yadkin River as a view corridor, and to deny requests for billboards in this area. And third, town council authorized the use of eminent domain to acquire two parcels for the NC DOT project number U-6154, also known to us as the roundabout at Louisville-Viana Road and Robin Hood Road.
Very good. Any questions or comments for the manager? All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, we've arrived at the second opportunity for you to address the council. Any of you have any thoughts on your mind you'd like to share with the council, this is a great time to come forward and do so. I don't see anybody stirring. Let me remind you that you can also submit comments at louisvillenc.net, actually, to townclerk@ louisvillenc.net, and we'll make those part of the record of this meeting. Council members, closing comments this evening. Well, this is pretty amazing. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Sorry. I think I have a comment. I do. I wanted to thank you, James, personally, for... There's a group in Louisville that meets every week for small businesses through the Louisville Clemens Chamber of Commerce, and they have started meeting over at the Galloway Center. This morning, there were about, gosh, 21 local business owners and entrepreneurs that were participating in that group. You found a way to say yes to one of their requests, so I really appreciate the efforts that staff and that you are taking upon yourselves to really embrace our community, not just our local residents, but also our businesses. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you for that.